It is, oh, there we go. Thank you. We're returning from executive session and it's 6:38 PM. I just need a motion to open our public meeting.
Eric makes the motion.
Eric makes the motion, not seconds.
Thank you, Eric, for the motion and Scott for the second. And all those in favor, Carrie?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Francine?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
And myself, Sonia, yes. We are, all seven of us, so the motion passes 7-0. We are back in our public session. Okay, so first things first is our pledge to the flag. Chris, can you show someone up? When you're not speaking, because I'm hearing, I think, myself through someone else's. Okay, do we actually have our student representative here today? We do, I think, yes. Hi, can you unmute yourself, please, and lead us in the pledge this evening? Hi.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Go ahead when you're ready.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, we begin this evening with administrator remarks. And who would like to go first? Dr. Gosh, are you in here?
Wouldn't miss it, Ms. Smith. Yes, if you don't mind, I'll reserve my comments for the multitude of presentations we have this evening.
Okay, fair enough. Dr. Harrington?
I will also reserve any comments for the consent agenda.
Okay. Mr. Carlson?
And I will also defer.
Okay, thank you. And Dr. Banlow?
I will also defer.
Sure, no one just wants to talk this evening. Okay, so I'll just simply say, you know, thank you. I don't know if we can say thank you enough, or if there are stronger words out there, but just thank you to everyone who just continues to pull together and, you know, do whatever we can on these times that we're trying to educate our kids in this Brewster. So just a thank you to everyone. And we will ask our student representative now what you would like to share.
Thank you for having me. A lot of exciting things going on. Right now, Democratic Congress at the high school is planning a holiday light tour. So basically, we are having a little competition between the houses in our neighborhood. You can register your house. We have a form to register your house, and then basically around Christmas time, you decorate it. And we have a vote on, you know, whose decorations are the best, and you get a little prize for that. So that's super fun, really community-based, really looking forward to it. It's also worth mentioning that DEMO's Vice President Nora Palladino is running food pantry right now. It is the Little Free Pantry at Brewster. You can sign up online. She has a registration form on her Facebook and Instagram, which are both Little Free Pantry Brewster. So Nora's amazing, definitely contribute to that, especially around Thanksgiving. We also have a clothing bin set up at the gym parking lot at high school. So if you have spare clothes that you are not using, that is a really great place to donate them, so they can be recycled or reused. And Democratic Congress is also organizing a virtual club fair in the next couple of weeks in lieu of the usual club fair where students would get to kind of meet people from each of the clubs and talk a little bit about what the club does. We are having each club make some kind of digital content, whether it's a presentation, a poster, a video. And we're going to be compiling those so that the students, the new students and anybody else can look at kind of what's going on at high school and what they can involve themselves in. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you so much for sharing. I'm glad that the students are just, you know, hanging in there and being creative and how to make this work and still be positive and successful. So thank you. Okay, we now can move on to our presentations, recognition discussion. And first up will be our COVID update. Dr. Banlow and Dr. Gosh?
Thank you, Ms. Masika. I'll start off. And Diana, I love to see Diana smiling, and the holiday light show sounds like a really awesome idea. So keep that going. So this evening, Dr. Gosh and I are going to give the board an update regarding COVID. And just, I just want to say that we are going to continue to fight as hard as we can to keep school open if it's safe for students and staff. So this is our first priority, our only main priority, and we'll talk more about that this evening. The State Department of Health, of course, is monitoring Brewster because we're on the border of Connecticut. And New York State has done a phenomenal job, the best in the nation, in keeping the infection rate down. But unfortunately, as we're witnessing all over, it's starting to creep into our world. So the county, every Monday, I have a meeting with the Putnam County Department of Health. They have been amazing, incredible. This Monday, the infection rate, as many of you probably have seen in the local newspaper, on Twitter, the infection rate is rising in Putnam County, not just Westchester County. We may be entering a yellow zone, according to Putnam County, very soon. And we have to also watch because we might be entering an orange zone very soon because of the rate of the numbers going up. And it's not just hitting Brewster, it's hitting Carmel, it's hitting several districts around us. As you know, Portchester is already, is also on the border of Connecticut and is already an orange-red zone. So if we enter a yellow zone, the district will pivot to 100% remote instruction. And why is that, Dr. Banlow? For several, several reasons. If we were to stay open in a yellow zone, as per the present, and I'm saying present because things change constantly, as all of us know, the present directive is that if we were to stay open, we would need to test 20% of our staff and student population. If we did that right now, it would cost us approximately $93,000 for the first view of the first two weeks. And we're going to take a look at that in the PowerPoint. But the cost of it is prohibitive, even though the state is telling everyone that they're going to be sending tests, which is great, but they are the rapid test. So there are a lot of questions around the accuracy of the rapid tests. And we're going to be talking more about that in an action item that's coming up in the agenda with a resolution from Westchester-Putnam School Board Association. The other concern that we have is, right now, as many of you know, we're working really hard to staff our buildings. And I have to thank Dr. Harrington and his department for making sure that we, and our principals, for making sure that we keep running as much as we can for our kids and our families. But we would face staffing issues if we test. You know, we're going to have some positive tests. That's also going to put us into some staffing issues. We do not have medical malpractice insurance. We would also need to work with our collective bargaining groups because we'd need permission from parents, we'd need permission from staff in order to do this. And just recently, last week, I had a meeting with the Lower Hudson Council of School Superintendents, and we have banded together and we put together a letter that we are sending to the governor's office because we need, in order to do this, we need more funding. And we also, as I said, I want to thank the Westchester-Putnam School Board Association as well because they shared a resolution with us that Ms. Masika will be discussing tonight in one of our action items regarding the concerns that they have, and also our PTAs throughout the state. NISCUS, the New York State Council of School Superintendents, and NISBA all are banding together because there is no way, it is just cost prohibitive. And it just, it would be impossible for us to do right now. I know that you've heard Mr. Carlson has shared the 20% loss in funding throughout the state for the district. That put us in a $4 million hole in addition to the transportation costs that put us even further. And Victor will talk about that tonight. So I just want everybody to be ready to watch the numbers. We would have to pivot right away to, and we will be ready. I want to thank our teachers, all of our collective bargaining groups, because no decision regarding this is made without working with them and without working with the Department of Health and our medical director. So all those decisions are made with a lot of people, a lot of experts in the room guiding us. So, Dr. Gosh, would you go into the PowerPoint presentation now?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. So that gave us a, thanks, Dr. Banlow, for pointing out where we are and how we are dealing with the current guidance available to us. We would just like to take you through a few more slides that give some additional background and details regarding the metrics and again, the current guidance. We can't emphasize that enough. The guidance could change when this meeting ends, if, with us getting another email or something from the governor. But we're working on the current guidance with our best thinking. All right, so where we are, we are 46 school days in, and there's a lot to celebrate. Thirty-five of those 46 days were scheduled. To think if we had had that number when we were doing our reentry planning, we all would be really proud about reaching this. And we are. And that, as you said, Dr. Banlow, has been a total team effort. So 35 of those days were scheduled, 11 of those had some sort of unanticipated change to a typical schedule. But as you know, we are trending towards disruptions. We want to take you through some of the steps and what we're using in order to make these determinations. All right, so if we do have to go to all remote, here are these external designations that would lead us to all remote scenarios. The first thing to know is that the entire state is broken up by county into different tiers. Okay, and these tiers take into account population, as well as, in some cases, the density and the size of cities within different counties. So Putnam County falls within a tier-three geographic area, along with 23 other counties. And that's important because being in that tier sets the metrics for which we would look at things like the seven-day rolling infection rates and the number of new positive cases. So as Dr. Banlow mentioned, we are trending towards a yellow zone designation, which would mean a 2.5% positivity rate for 10 days on a seven-day rolling average. So in addition to that, there is also 10 or more new cases, which unfortunately, Putnam County is having no trouble meeting. The next slide talks about how we would possibly get out of a yellow zone. And what would have to happen is the Putnam County would have to see an overall decline in the positivity rating and a positivity rating below 2%. So that those numbers that got us into the yellow zone, of course, would have to come back down. The, Dr. Banlow, also mentioned that we're trending towards an orange zone. And we know all this through our constant, ongoing collaboration with the Putnam County Department of Health, who have been wonderful and great partners in this work. The metrics for an orange warning zone, still a seven-day rolling average positivity rate above 4.5% and 15 or more new cases each day. In order to get out of the orange zone, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Whelan, next slide, we would, again, have to see decreases on those same two metrics and getting that positivity rate below 3%. Next to the red zone, so let's hope we never see this. But if we hit 5.5% for a seven-day rolling average for 10 straight days, and we have 15 or more cases, then we would get into a red zone. Obviously, it's more difficult as we, as these incremental designations hit us to get that positivity rating back down. So in order to exit the red zone, we would have to see a decrease of 4%, a positivity rate of 4% or less for 10 days. So those are the metrics that we're dealing with. This is now, you know, what we're becoming familiar with. Again, this is the current guidance, it's always subject to change, but this is what would drive the decisions. It's not us making a decision saying, you know, we feel like we're going to be in this zone today, right? This is what makes us get into any particular scenario. All right, so what does this mean for schools? As Dr. Banlow mentioned, there is a testing requirement if we are in a yellow zone in order to reopen. And what that would be is that 20% of students and staff would have to be tested. This would be done, there would be a random sort of selection. And if those test results happen to come back in under the regional percentage or the county-wide percentage, then there is a possibility of reopening. However, as Dr. Banlow mentioned, we are unable to do that at this point, given all of the barriers that have been discussed. And the orange and the red zone, if we do hit those zones, there's no testing, testing opt-out for this. It's not even a choice. So again, in terms of the overall implications, we cannot open for in-person instruction if we are in a yellow zone or an orange or, God forbid, a red zone. So what we are doing, then, Mr. Whelan, if you wouldn't mind, the next slide, is that we're working closely with our teacher union leadership to talk about these all-remote schedules. We designed all-remote schedules in the summer. We live them, we want to make some adjustments to them. We know there have been some confusion back and forth about, well, why are we doing cohort? Why are we doing all-remote? These are the guiding principles that are going to play into each of the scenarios that we deal with. So when we're thinking about which schedule we're going to be using when we go all-remote, we need to talk about where we are in the current cycle. If we happen to go all-remote on a Wednesday evening and Brewster High School hasn't seen periods 5 through 8, like they would on a Thursday and Friday, we need to take that into consideration. We also need to take into consideration the amount of notice that staff and students would have in terms of being able to plan. If we switch schedules, they might see different classes, which of course have planning implications. And finally, the duration of all-remote instruction. If we happen to know that that is the case, then, let's say, a two-week closing, then we would take that into account. So just parents and students and staff, that's our thinking around how we would approach these potential closings moving forward. Okay, so while we are, what sort of makes this so difficult is that we're planning for multiple scenarios at once. So please know that we still have some in-person considerations that we're looking at, and we've been talking to you about these for months. So I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to run through these. Mr. Whelan, if you wouldn't mind, next slide. Thank you. This is the ongoing review process that we have discussed. We've had a number of parent surveys, we've had teacher and student focus groups. We've reconvened the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee. We're constantly looking at our enrollment trends. All these pieces is an ongoing recursive process that helps us make informed decisions. So what we've been able to do so far, thanks to the support of the Board of Education, there is a teaching assistant on the agenda for tonight for CB-Star. There were some, Wells Middle School is still on the table. So thank you for your support in adding those two positions. We were able to bring back our special class students with disabilities. And we've made some adjustments to lunch, again, in collaboration with the Putnam County Department of Health. We've had to remove some tables from Brewster High School and put in desks, same at JFK. And CB-Star is also temporarily using the middle school gym as overflow. Next slide, please, Mr. Whelan. Thank you. So our first change, and this is something that we're going to be putting out some additional information on. If you remember from our reopening sessions, we had talked about seating students one per row as opposed to one per seat. What this did is it caused us to have two tiers of busing. In order to have two tiers of busing within a contractual day of an employee's contractual day, there were students, students would have to go to certain areas before and after the school day started and ended. So even though those students were within the social distancing guidelines, six feet or more seated, masks on, we have had situations where we've had COVID-positive infectious individuals on campus that have caused for a large number of students to quarantine because students were in these spaces. Again, we were within the guidelines. However, given the infectivity rate and the Department of Health guidance, a number of students had to quarantine. If we are able to go to one-tier busing, we are able to limit those larger group gatherings before and at the beginning and at the end of the school day. We also are going to see an increase in instructional time, which is, to me, a win-win. And we're looking to do this the week after Thanksgiving. But again, there'll be more information coming out about this, but we wanted to mention this to the board this evening. The second change has to do with professional learning and release time. If you work in other districts, you know that a number of other districts will designate an entire, you know, each Wednesday to asynchronous learning. Or they have, you know, various modes of ways that they're giving teachers planning time. Teachers are working harder than ever, they need time to plan with one another, they need time to adjust their lessons. Even if they've been teaching for 20 years, a digital lesson is not the same as an in-person lesson. So we're advocating, we've been talking about this, we're advocating for one day a month release time. We would ask that that would start a week from Wednesday, November 23rd. It's an early release day anyway. We would ask for that day to be an all-remote day and asynchronous. Again, more information to come on that tomorrow morning, but we wanted to share that with the board. We would also propose that we would look at this similar model, one day a month, moving forward, rotating between cohorts. All right, and there's so much more to talk about, but I know that we have a number of presentations. But just please know that we will continue to evaluate all learning models K-12, and we'll absolutely do our best to communicate timely and effectively to you all things COVID as new information comes our way.
Thank you, Dr. Gosh. And it would be Wednesday, November 25th, correct? That would be, just want to double check.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I looked at that with you, so I'm going to say that was my mistake, so no biggie. So I want to open it up to the board to see if you have any questions.
I have, I just had a question. If we do go into yellow or orange or red and we are doing 100% virtual, no matter which color we get into, the idea is that as soon as we are out of yellow, even if we're at red and we make our way back down to yellow, as soon as we're out of yellow, the kids are going back to school, correct? Whether that's January, February, you know, no matter what month.
Yeah, as of this minute, Carrie, I'm going to answer you because, as you know, things change. But if we get out of yellow, we have to test out of yellow. So that's why you're going to be looking at a resolution tonight, because we are going to be appealing to the governor for more funding for testing. So if we get out of yellow, then yes, we definitely want to get students back into school. Absolutely.
But even if we don't test out, if the circumstances that put us into yellow no longer exist within the county? So, you know, forget the testing, assuming we can't do it and they don't take it away. But if we don't meet the rolling day average of positivity and we're just not yellow anymore, the kids will then, will transition back to in-person learning?
Yes.
Hybrid, whatever it is.
Yes. And if there's any other information that comes out between now and then, I'll certainly share it, but the answer would be yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Oh, and one question on the testing. Is it 20% of the staff and 20% of the students or 20% of students and staff together?
The latter, 20% of students and staff together.
Okay, thanks.
And that dollar amount that I mentioned was, for every two weeks that we would do it, that would be $93,000. But we are going to be looking for other ways, if it's possible, moving forward. We have a lot of questions up to the State Department of Health that we still need to get answered. But as you can imagine, they're totally overwhelmed right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions? Scott?
Yeah, Scott.
Eric, you would.
Just quickly, so as we go to the one-tier busing model, could you just briefly give a little bit of a, kind of, an example of sort of how maybe some of the cohort-wide, grade-wide closures that we've experienced before would potentially be impacted? Had we been in a one-tier busing model previously?
Sure. So I'll give an answer and then tell me if I don't really answer your question. What we're thinking, and Ms. Smith and her Transportation Department are thinking, we would start students at row four because that would be six feet or more from the driver, and then seat students one per seat, six feet apart. Again, this was all cleared by the Department of Health and the school medical director from seat four all the way to the back of the bus. So what might have to happen is, depending on where our student, an infectious individual is on the bus, there would still be a radius of students and potentially staff on that bus that could be impacted and have to quarantine. An advantage to being a little bit closer on the bus is that the hatch is open, vents, the windows, right? And so there's natural ventilation there that might not exist in another space. So while we might have a number of students in a radius on a bus that would have to quarantine, those students from that bus and five other buses are not all going into the gym. Again, less than 50 students because we're all within the guidelines, less than 50 students seated, masks on, six feet apart. We might end up quarantining, let's say, 10 students as opposed to 50 that go into that holding area in the beginning of the school day. And if the student is there at the beginning of the school day and the end of the school day, there is some overlap with students there. But potentially, there's even more students that we would be looking at having to quarantine as well. So that's one example of how that shift can help us quarantine fewer students.
So it's safe to say that, and absolutely understood why we started doing the transportation, but doing this now should greatly reduce, if we do have a student who tests positive, it should greatly reduce the sheer number of students who have to end up going out at the same time and all.
If that student or staff member takes the bus, yes, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Sure. Scott, I should still say, it's still at a safe distance. The transmission rate is still low in all scenarios, right? So we wouldn't ever take that risk. Just a matter of looking at the number of students that would have to be quarantined in those two situations. Sorry, Dr. Banlow, I cut you off.
No, that was a really good point. Thank you, Dr. Gosh. Okay, Scott?
Yeah, if I could, the numbers are getting bad. We had to cancel the end of the sports program. At Halloween, we have Thanksgiving, and then we have our college students coming home. And I just saw that Northern Rockland has a preemptive strike went on full distance remote until January. Maybe it's an overreaction, but is there anything to be gained from us doing something similar? I know the kids need to be in class, and I want my kid and everybody else to have as much hands on it. But by getting ahead of it, our teachers aren't being exposed, our students aren't being exposed, we can control it, have more people to do the distance learning. I mean, there was a giant party Saturday outside of town, one if not two. It's going to happen. The exposure's not in the school, it's out, but it's going to affect us all. I mean, can we get ahead of it? Does it make any sense? Or is it better to get as much in time for our kids as we can? Because if you look at that yellow, orange, red, I mean, once written, it seems like we're not going to be out of it for a long time.
Right, and Scott, that's a really good question. That came up in several meetings I've had with superintendents across the region, and I'm aware of what Rockland, North Rockland, did because their numbers were so high. At this point, we're going to be sticking with the metrics and the governor's metrics and not having any preemptive closings unless the board tells us otherwise, that is their wish. When I spoke to Doc, I did speak to the medical director because there was, a couple of weeks ago, there was conversation about shutting down between Thanksgiving and, right after Thanksgiving or before Thanksgiving. And our medical director and the Department of Health said that the best time to close would be, just what you said, would be going all the way till January 20th and just closing straight through. But with that said, that's, you know, we're following the governor's metrics as other districts are throughout the region. We're watching very carefully with the Department of Health and the medical director. We're monitoring it. We are heading to, we all know we're heading to yellow, possibly orange. So we're going to be heading into a remote. So I guess to answer your question right now, we're going to just continue to follow the metrics unless the board as a whole decides, you know, this is what we'd want to do. That, you know, that's, that's pretty much where we are at this point, but watching everything very, very carefully.
Thank you. I value your input. But I just wanted to hear from your side, because my head tells me some things which are based upon, sometimes irrational stuff, but thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Any other questions regarding the COVID presentation? Okay, Ms. Masika, can we go right into the next presentation, which is equity?
Yes, yep. Equity update, please. Thank you.
Okay, so every meeting, we're going to be having an equity update and also a Brewster Vision 2025 update for the board and for the community. So we're going to start with the equity update. I'll start, and then Dr. Gosh is going to kick in. I just need to let the board know at this time, and first, I want to preface this saying that the equity work we are doing is of the utmost importance to all of us, all of us. We want to continue this work. We want to make sure it's meaningful, and we want to make sure that everybody is present as we go through this work. With that said, our staff, our administrators, our teachers, our support staff, they have been so consumed, my executive team, so consumed with COVID right now, and I know you're aware of this, with reaching out to parents, we want to make sure we reach out to families if, you know, we're doing contact tracing, working with the Department of Health. They have been working round the clock, all weekends. They have been working around the clock week, all weekends. Anytime we have any meetings for equity with the administration or we're planning something with with the community. My team is getting pulled out of it, the work is too important for us to be pulled out of it. So I told Dr. Gosh, I want it, we want to take a pause right now in the month of November with our equity work. And then revisit it, lift it and move it to December and then revisit where we're at at that point if we can to continue. So I I just wanted to share that before Dr. Gosh shares the work that we've done to this point, it is important, we want to continue it. But because of the amount of COVID investigations and and issues that we have had in the district like other districts around us. We're pausing it for November, we're going to look at it in December, okay, Dr. Gosh, you want to kick in?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Whalen, would you mind going to the next slide? So we just put a graphic together to summarize the equity work that we have done since the summer. Starting in the far right, root cause analysis and strategic plan is our most recent work. We were able to engage in a session with NYU and a team of about 50 staff members. Across the district as well as some some parents and community members to take a deep dive into. Who we are and Brewster, what our data shows in terms of how we best or how we serve students. What NYU has done is they have taken a a number of data points and they've created workbooks for each. Building as well as a district wide workbook that talks about what our data, what's kind of story our data is telling. So when we are able to reconvene this group, that will be the the discussion, what that that. What those data workbooks look like. Moving counterclockwise, our equity collaborative is our partnership that we're having with. Community members who are interested in in partnering with us on on equity. What we did is we met, I believe, twice over the summer and asked for what it is that that parents and community members wanted to. Partner with us on in terms of equity. From there, we were able to identify subcategories and we've broken to sub collaboratives that are taking a deep dive. Into those those topics curriculum and instruction, human resources, extracurriculars. So there are administrators that are co leading these sub collaboratives. That are taking deep dives and reporting back to to the equity collaborative, so this is a way that we're looking at. You know, this grassroots sort of of effort as well. And then finally, continuing counterclockwise professional learning, the administrative team has been involved in. A number of culturally responsive sustaining educational practices with NYU. And the idea is that we will as start as as practitioners. Looking at our decision making through an equity lens and those. Those sessions, speaking for myself, have been pretty transformative and have already helped me. Think differently about decisions that I make in a on a daily basis. So all of these efforts together, of course, lead to our multi year commitment to to equity. It's our hope that the root cause analysis will lead to a strand in our strategic plan and and vision 2025 in in terms of equity. So we see this again as a a a long term effort that we are deeply committed to and. This is how we're we have, we have gotten started so far this year.
Thank you, Dr. Gosh, any questions from the board?
Not a question, but just a a comment. To say. Thank you again. You know, I can't imagine what. Any of our teachers or administrators, miss your team, anyone who, you know, has to juggle this. And I'm I'm grateful that, you know, we are as a district still committed to this work, I mean. There will always be challenges, I know right now COVID is just extremely challenging. So I appreciate the commitment to. Continue it and check in as as often as we can to make sure we don't table this and revisit it. You know, we like to to commit to work that we do, so you know. I'm I'm grateful that everyone is prioritizing things and putting focus where it needs to be right now and. You know, to your suggestion, looking at this again in December and hopefully. You know, how depending on how things go, we can find ways to just to continue the work and in a way that's not stressful because we don't want to. Definitely add any anything more in that way. And the work shouldn't be that, it really should be something that's engaging and and optimistic and. Just, you know, something great that we're doing, so I don't know that we'd have positive results if we're walking into that work as another thing to do with stress, you know, around it, so. Thank you for, you know, the commitment to continue, but at the same time, but finding a way to to do it in a very balanced. Way, so I just wanted to say that, I don't know if anyone else in the board did have questions. So I'll just, yeah, if anyone else has anything else they want to add.
Yeah, I'll just add, I don't really, I, there's so many things that's going on today with COVID. Even though Dr. Banlow suggested it was. Being postponed or tabled, I don't really see it like that, I think all of our board members, I mean, I don't, I don't have to name anybody, every single board member here. Has done a lot in on this front and I don't really see it as being tabled or postponed. Between now and December or whenever, there's still, we we we've been going to, we've been going to symposium, we've been going to. Webinars, we've been doing a lot of a lot of things on this subject, so. Even though you you couched it in those terms, it it's, we're still doing the work. So I just want the community to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitehead, I think that was really important to clarify, and I know the board did partake in a an excellent equity workshop at NISBA. So um, thank you for clarifying that. Any other comments, questions regarding equity? Okay, okay, Ms. Messica, maybe move on to the next.
Yep, Brewster Vision 2025 update.
Okay, so um, we had a great kickoff meeting. With Kevin Castner from the Cambridge Group. We had about 30 people and I want to thank everybody, I want to thank the board members, I want to thank, you know, some of our families who who joined us for that. But then right after that, everything, all of a sudden, we started getting a million different cases, as you know, and the letter started going out where we had to, you know. Close school and quarantine several individuals. So what we're going to do is we are going to just put a pause, we were going to have our November work session, but again, we need everybody to be present and be part of it. And I think as Mr. Whitehead suggested, we're just, we're not really pausing, we're still committed to it, so we're going to lift it and just move it into January. We've already penciled some dates into our calendars for January and I'll get those out to everybody. Hopefully, if if things look really positive and we're going to think positive, we're going to move forward with everything. But we will revisit it as we get closer to January as with the board and make a decision as far as. If we're going to be getting together to do that, so it's really, really critical that we get the the that roadmap in place. And just wanted to share that piece, so any any questions or comments from the board or clarification?
Dr. Banlow, I think another good thing might be with this, the the finding the new dates. Could we possibly look at some evening time, I know that it was originally, you know, thought to have three days during the day. I personally find that very challenging, especially now, and I really would hate to pull. Any administrator or teacher out of a classroom for the work as important as it is. And even our community members, I'm not sure how many people know with with days of working or being limited or. I I think perhaps evening times or even weekend times might be more approachable. So if we could just maybe look at those possibilities as well, that'd just be my suggestion.
Absolutely, and I actually did talk to Kevin Arredi and said that we really need to do it not during this school day. So we will definitely look at the evening times and I'll run those times past you and the board. Maybe if, you know, Friday, Friday or a Saturday or even like, you know, during the work, the week, but absolutely, we will do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments, questions or concerns?
I have a question, so I had the opportunity to attend the presentation. And one of the things that was brought up initially was that there was going to be. An opportunity for Spanish speaking families to also join in. So I know things are being put on pause, but is that something that a date is potentially put in place for January?
Absolutely, and I'm glad that you reminded me of that, Daisy, we definitely will do that, yes. And we'll make sure that we get the communication out about that.
Thank you. Also to add, because I know, again, because I work with so many families in the community. And I know that a lot of our families do struggle with with reading. I don't know if even be possibly sending out like a video form of. The Vision 2025, so they can actually see it and hear it. And I think it would be much easier to process as opposed to receiving a letter or an email. And then having some words that, again, there's some words that I don't even know how to pronounce, or I don't even know what they're saying. I think maybe going that form may be a little bit easier for some families.
Okay, thank, thank you, that's a great idea. Okay, we'll definitely do that, thanks. Keep those ideas coming to me, I appreciate it. Any other questions or thoughts or? Okay, all right, thank you, everybody, so thank you, Ms. Messica, I think you can, we can move on to the fourth presentation.
Okay, thank you, so next up is our long range financial plan presentation, Mr. Carlson.
Hey, good evening, I will. Share my screen now, give me one moment. Okay, am I good, is everyone able to see my screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, no, wait, yes.
Okay, so good evening, thank you for allowing me to present our long range financial plan, this, I believe, is our our third year presenting. The plan of the Board of Education, it really is a a good opportunity for us to really. Kickstart really our our budget preparation, which we've already begun. Now, more than ever, obviously, given the financial uncertainty of our potential state aid reduction, long range financial planning, of course, is now. More important than ever before. So our long range financial plan is on the website in its entirety. This presentation is really a an overview of that plan, it's a 10,000 foot view. Really going to be focusing on trends and topics and less so on the, you know, specific dollar amount, so. Again, you know, if you want that that information, it's available on our website. But really, the focus of tonight's presentation is on trends and topics. And you see at the bottom, we have this caveat, do not be alarmed by future funding gaps, most plans do. So if you, you know, take a look back at our our plan from last year, which was, you know, we we presented the same. You know, there's our our plan last year, last November, how could we have possibly known that we would be in the middle of a pandemic? The next year, so you know, one, what we have here is another caveat that the future is uncertain, so you know, things are certainly going to change, but of course, we need to identify those emerging trends. So of course, we're going to start with our instructional program, it's why we're here, so for the past several years, we've been committed to our strategic coherence plan, which is now evolving. Into Vision 2025, so as we progress in our development of Vision 2025, it'll identify. How we use our limited resources in in guiding the district over the next five years with, again, our new roadmap, Vision 2025. One thing that we saw this past September is we had a larger number of teacher retirements than we typically see in a normal year. And that's not unique to Brewster. As we've seen throughout the state, there was an increase of about 9% of teacher retirements, teacher retirement applications submitted. Between the period of April through August. So, you know, certainly Brewster's not unique in that we had a more teacher retirements than we typically have in a in a normal year. With that, we need to make sure that we are able to attract and retain high quality educators and also provide them with the resources they need to be successful. And and please stop me at any point during this presentation if if you have any questions. Moving on to our enrollments, so tonight, the board is being asked to approve our enrollment projection report, which was. Provided to us by an independent demographer, Statistical Forecasting, Inc. As you can see, over the past decade, we've had a decline in enrollment. Again, not dissimilar to any other school districts in New York State. New York overall has seen a a decline in population over the past decade, our school district is no different than that. 2021 is the current year that we're in. We did see a significant decrease in enrollment this year as compared to our projection. Which in conversation with our demographer is most likely due to the COVID-19 pandemic. It's our belief that, you know, a greater number of parents opted for homeschooling, private placement for students that are for. Private placements where there's 100% in person instruction and kindergarten deferral. So moving forward over the next five years, it's our belief that once this pandemic is over, hopefully very, very, very soon. That those, the majority of those students will return in district. However, again, over the next five years, there still will be a slight decline in our enrollment. Again, not unlike any other school district in the state. Now we'll move on to some of our financial items, so property taxes make up about 75% of our revenue budget. The tax cap obviously has a huge impact on our our property tax levy. Over the past nine years, we've averaged 2.1% increase each year. But we now know, of course, that there is no such thing as a 2% tax cap and it has a range, so in in 1819, we had a tax cap which was over 4%. And then we've had other years where tax cap was, you know, well below 2%, you know, 1 and 1/2% in some years. We compare that with the adjusted gross incomes of our Brewster residents. And over that same period through 2017. This is the time in which data is available, so we get this information from New York State, so for the years ended 2018 and 2019, the data that is not available. But again, comparatively, the tax levy increases averaged 2.1%. Meanwhile, the changes in a gross, changes in adjusted gross incomes of Brewster residents has increased by 1.6%. So basically, what we're showing in this slide is that the tax cap is working in that it's aligning our. Our residents ability to pay more so with the tax levy increases. And my belief is if the 2018 and 2019 data was available, the average would be much closer to the 2.1% or even slightly above that 2.1%. What's really throwing this this number off is in 2017, this looks to me to be an anomaly of a 5% decrease in adjusted gross incomes. Again, the the picture that we're painting, though, is the tax cap is working. Moving on to state and federal aid, which makes up 25, 20% of our revenue budget. As we've been discussing for the past several months, state aid is, has been and continues to be wildly unpredictable, so. We've had swings of negative 13% entering 1011 to plus 10% entering 1314. The state has been applying, you know, certain programs which reduce our aid. In the past, we we were contending with the GEA or gap elimination adjustment. Which was then offset by federal program, the American Recovery and Relief Act or ARA. Most recently, this past spring, our state aid was reduced by a mechanism that they're now calling the pandemic adjustment. Which was then counterbalanced by federal legislation, the CARES Act. And and I want to note that it wasn't exactly a one for one switch. While they took the pandemic adjustment out of our left pocket and put CARES Act funding in our right pocket. CARES Act funding came with a lot of strings attached, including a requirement that we distribute that. Along to our to other non public schools within our encadment, so we actually did lose some of our state aid in that transaction. As we discussed at the September 8th board meeting, the state has begun withholding 20% of aid from all 713 school districts, this is not unique to Brewster. This is a statewide issue and there are also several other states in similar circumstances. In Brewster, this would mean a a reduction in state aid of over $4 million, and again, this was presented at the September 8th board meeting. And, you know, the way that I described it is that $4 million represents approximately three times that of a contingency budget. So each year when we, you know, we're in our our budget discussions, we talk about how, you know, damaging a contingency budget will be. Well, this has the impact of three times that, so it's it's certainly concerning for us. And unfortunately, even on November 17th, there are more questions than answers, in fact, there has not been any update from. The state with regard to this impending reduction. They have indicated that at some point in the month of, month of November, they would provide more information. And my fear is that the more information they provide, the worse picture it will provide us. So right now, it's a 20% across the board reduction, my belief is when the state actually gets to the point of enacting this, they're going to enact it based on. Based on need. And, you know, obviously, New York City and the big five city school districts are probably going to be protected more. Than what are what are believed to be wealthier districts, you know, which would include Brewster, so my belief is that this reduction may even. So, my belief is that this reduction may even exceed twenty percent, which is e- extremely concerning for us. So, what, what does it look like going forward? Um, we have no idea. I'm not, I'm certainly not an economist. So, I have absolutely no idea what a recovery may look like. What, what I do know is that after the two thousand eight financial crisis, state aid didn't return to pre-crisis levels until eight years later. Uh, what I've done for the purposes of our projection is, I chose an eight-year recovery period with leveling increases in state aid um, to get back to, to get back to even. Uh, so you'll see here, you know, in, in the blue, blue bars represents our historical state aid. Uh, as you can see, in, uh, two thousand eight-nine, the start of the recession, there was, you know, of course, a V set, V-shaped curve. Um, twenty twenty-one, not knowing what this will look like, um, you know, we have a huge drop off of our twenty percent cut. Uh, and then a, um, you know, a, a slow eight-year recovery period. Moving on to the expenditure side of our budget, we are a service organization, so naturally salaries and benefits make up uh, about seventy-five to eighty percent of our budget. All employees in the district, um, function under an employment contract. Our four major bargaining units are the AAB Administrators Association of Brewster, BTA Brewster Teachers Association, Clerical Unit of, um, the BTA, uh, and the SEIU's, uh, Service Employees International Union. And then we also have, um, about two dozen employees who function under, uh, non-union, um, contracts, so individual contracts with the Board of Education. A lot of this is, um, a recap of our budget one oh one, so forgive me if this is repetitive. Um, and you can also go on our, our website for our budget one oh ones, which also provide some more insight about some of the challenges that we face, um, each year in budget development and especially in long-range financial planning. So, one of the challenges that we have is, uh, our salary schedules embedded in each of these collective bargaining agreements were established decades before the tax cap. And, and some of those step increases range from one percent to all the way up to six point seven percent. Clearly, a, a six point seven percent step increase, you know, exceeds what will, uh, you know, what the tax cap will allow. Again, you know, more close to, to two percent, certainly than six point seven percent. Now, to their credit, the BTA and the clerical units have agreed to, uh, new salary schedules for new employees uh, that limit those step increases to two percent. Of course, that more closely aligns with the tax cap. But this is a perspective change. So, only through, um, you know, retirement and attrition will, uh, you know, the district see the benefits of that. And we are starting to see the benefits of new employees coming under those, uh, those new salary schedules. Moving on to benefits, again, about, excuse me, twenty-five percent of our budget, uh, goes to benefits. Pensions as a, um, subsection of that represents about five percent of our budget. This chart shows the employer contribution rates by decade for the two, um, major pension systems. So, um, I'll, I'll show in the next slide, every employee in the, in New York State is eligible to participate in one of these two pension systems. ERS is the Employees Retirement System. It applies to non-instructional staff such as, uh, bus drivers and cleaners, um, clerical employees and, uh, child nutrition employees. And, uh, again, non-instructional staff, TRS, Teachers Retirement System, applies to instructional staff. So, teachers, teaching assistants, and administrators. Um, over the past three decades, you can see that the, uh, pension contributions, the employer pension contributions have been significantly higher uh, in recent history than, uh, than in the past, with the ERS system averaging about sixteen percent and TRS averaging about twelve percent. Again, as I mentioned, every employee is eligible to participate. And similar to what we've done locally, the state has done on a statewide basis in introducing new tiers for new employees. Tiers, T I E R S, uh, for new employees with, you know, reduced benefits, increased, um, uh, vesting periods, longer, um, let, longer, um, retirement, um, lives and, um, and a higher retirement age. So, in effect, the employer pension contribution rates have decreased. But, again, similar to our, uh, local, uh, changes to our collective bargain agreements, this is a perspective change. So, as new employees enter, um, public service, on or after January first, twenty ten, these new, um, you know, this new system applies to them and, and the employer, um, is afforded some relief in, in pension contributions. Moving on to health insurance, which as a subset is thirteen percent of our budget. Um, similar to the salary schedules, we also have employee health insurance contribution rates, uh, which were negotiated again decades before the tax cap. Um, and they range from seven percent to twenty-one percent for our active members. Uh, again, to their credit, every bargaining unit in the district has agreed to contracts, um, or agreed to increased health insurance contributions for new employees. Again, this is a prospective change, so we'll see that over time with, uh, retirements and resignations and through attrition. Um, just a, a note about our health insurance consortium, we participate in a consortium with uh, about fourteen other districts in Potomac, Northern Westchester, Bosse's. The average increase in our premiums over the past ten years has been a very manageable three point two percent, which compared to other, uh, health plans certainly has performed more favorably than those, but still exceeds what the tax cap will allow. Uh, capital planning and debt management, so, much like our homes, um, our school facilities require, um, you know, routine maintenance and infrastructure improvements. This, uh, past summer, we had a building conditions, uh, survey performed by, uh, licensed architects and mechanical engineers. So, they have, um, you know, been through our buildings and met with our, our head custodians, our director of facilities and assistant director of facilities. Um, they will be back, um, yeah, in front of the board on December fifteenth to present their findings. Um, but what a building condition survey does, it, of course, prioritizes work or identifies facility needs and prioritizes those work over the course of the next five years, or sometimes more. Um, more often than not, the, uh, amount of work necessary to maintain the facilities exceeds what we can afford in a, in a typical budget. Um, because of that, um, usually districts will, um, uh, fund these projects through construction bonds, the establishment of, uh, capital reserve or utilization of fund balance, or a combination of all three. Um, historically, in Brewster, uh, we've committed to capital planning through the issuance of construction bonds while timing the expiration of, uh, or timing the extinguishment of expiring debt. Um, and as you can see, for the next, um, I can move this. For the next, excuse me, so for the next, uh, seven years, it appears, we have, uh, relatively stable, uh, debt service. So, our, our, this is our construction debt, uh, and you can see through twenty-six, twenty-seven, uh, we have very stable, uh, construction debt. But then in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, we have a big drop off, uh, so, which is, uh, presents an opportunity for us to invest in our facilities. And just, uh, to show our recent successes, um, in October of two thousand nine, um, the voters approved the twenty-eight million dollar construction project for the Wells Middle School renovation project. In sixteen seventeen, we issued a, a construction bond to permanently finance that. And the tax levy increase in that year is just one point nine percent. In December of twenty fourteen, the voters authorized a thirty-nine million dollar construction project. We just issued that bond in, uh, in July, uh, and received extremely favorable interest rates due to the interest rate environment. And the tax levy increase, of course, in the first year of, uh, of that bond payment is one point five percent. So, it shows that, you know, in, in spite of authorizing construction debt, we've managed, uh, to limit the increase in the tax levy, uh, which, of course, is a good thing. So, you, you know, we have a history of success, um, in, in managing capital projects, and, and that's a great thing. Um, so, again, we anticipate level debt for the next six years, but, you know, we recognize that in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, there's an opportunity uh, to enhance our facilities, make sure that we're, um, you know, performing preventative maintenance before something happens, um, you know, which would, of course, you know, be an emergency. Uh, I, I mentioned the building condition survey will be presented at the December fifteenth board meeting. Uh, thereafter, we will be establishing a facilities committee, um, to identify any of our other instructional needs. And, and certainly, Vision twenty twenty-five is going to play a, a role in that and identifying what, you know, instructional spaces will look like in the future. Um, the building condition survey, its intent really is, uh, a nuts and bolts, um, you know, look at, at, you know, facilities needs. Um, any, you know, uh, I don't want to say bells and whistles, but I will. Uh, those are, those types of things usually are, uh, the result of the establishment of a facilities committee. So, just, uh, just for, um, you know, uh, perspective, what, what you'll see on the December fifteenth board meeting is probably going to be pretty boring. Even more boring than this long-range financial plan. So, moving on to our fleet replacement plan, I've, I've talked about this ad nauseam, you know, during the budget process. We've been committed to this plan since thirteen fourteen. Uh, and, uh, obviously, just like our, our facilities, we want to make sure that we're, um, you know, paying attention to our transportation fleet, making sure that we are, you know, replacing our vehicles before they fall out of service and provide a, uh, you know, a disruption in transportation services. Unfortunately, because we haven't committed to a fleet, you know, replacement plan, uh, you know, for all of our, our, uh, years, we do have, um, a number of vehicles that are, uh, al- almost out of service and are over sixteen years old, so six vehicles. And, of course, they're going to be falling out of service soon, and, and also some of these vehicles that are in the eleven to fifteen year range. In, in a perfect world where we commit to a fleet replacement plan, eventually, our fleet age will align within each five-year increment. And just one percent of our vehicles, if any, will be over sixteen years old. And, of course, you know, that's a good thing because we want to make sure that the buses that we're providing for our students are the safest and also the most fuel efficient. So, um, how do we do that? So, each year, we request, uh, through proposition number two, an authorization for, um, the purchase of transportation vehicles. Uh, for the past four years, uh, we've requested about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Prior to that, our request was about five hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, and as you can see, as time goes on, eventually, uh, these borrowings are paid off and then replaced by subsequent years borrowing. So, the impact on the, the budget is really limited. Um, for the next three years, we're anticipating that, again, based on our, our, uh, assumptions, uh, that the district commits to the fleet replacement plan at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar level, uh, which would, uh, incur an increase in the budget of about fifty thousand dollars until we reach twenty-three, twenty-four. At that time, the, um, uh, May twenty sixteen borrowing of about five hundred thousand dollars will be replaced by a new borrowing of seven hundred and fifty thousand, and the actual impact on the budget is limited. It's, it's zero. Um, I also want to add the fact that, uh, we do receive transfer, uh, transportation aid on these purchases. So, while the increase on the expenditure side of the budget is fifty-three thousand or fifty thousand on average, uh, we do receive twenty-five percent of that, uh, I'm sorry, twenty-five thousand in state aid. So, really, the net cost to us is about twenty-five grand. Again, mo- most importantly, it makes sure that we commit to replacing our vehicles so that they're the safest and most fuel efficient for our students. Similarly, we have an instructional technology replacement plan, uh, same concept. Uh, back, uh, I want to say it was twenty fifteen, we received an incredible one point six million dollars through the Smart Schools Bond Act. Uh, and we intentionally, um, use that money over the, uh, course of four years, rather than infuse, you know, one point six million dollars immediately, um, in, into the district because what that would have done is created one point six million dollar hole at the point in time which these devices become obsolete, because what we know is, just like our own cell phones, uh, technology devices quickly become obsolete within three to five years. Um, so this chart shows what our commitment to instructional technology has been over the past, uh, several years. Um, installment purchase agreements are not new to us. Uh, back in May of twenty fourteen was the, um, we had an, um, installment purchase agreement for instructional technology. It has now been paid off. Uh, the Smart Schools Bond Act, again, we used strategically over a four-year period, uh, four hundred thousand dollars a year to purchase, of course, you know, Chromebooks and our one-to-one devices and also devices for our educators. Um, in May of twenty nineteen, uh, the board approved the first IPA for four hundred thousand, May of twenty twenty. Uh, the second IPA was approved. And similar concept to our fleet replacement plan, over time, the, um, IPAs become embedded in our budget. And as one is paid off, is replaced by another, and then there's a, uh, there's no impact on the budget whatsoever. Um, so that's our goal is to, uh, you know, continue on our instructional technology replacement plan, uh, similar to our fleet replacement plan, because obviously, these technology devices are just important, if not more important than textbooks are. So, in, in summary, uh, again, this was a, uh, ten thousand foot view of, um, you know, of the, the things that are, that are impacting us. Um, the, the plan allows us to identify emerging issues, adapt by applying counterbalancing measures, uh, and resolve issues before they compound. So, again, now more than ever, long-range financial planning is, is extremely important to us. And I, and I also want to mention, you know, with the counterbalancing measures, um, the, the long-range plan assumes no changes. It assumes that we're just carrying on business as usual. Every year, the Board of Education adopts a balanced budget. And, you know, for this next year, we will be adopting a balanced budget, and it may be difficult. But I want, you know, I want the community to make sure that you understand that, you know, this long-range financial plan paints a picture as if we're not going to change anything. Uh, you know, one last caveat is that the future is unknown, as I mentioned in the opening. At the, at this time last year, when I was presenting this plan, I could not have ever imagined that I'd be presenting this next one, um, you know, via Zoom, uh, as a result, result of a pandemic. So, things will certainly change. And, of course, our long-range financial plan is available on our business office website. And lastly, uh, community budget forums. So, this year, more than ever, it's important for our community to have input on the budget process. We are certainly going to be starting early, um, in terms of, uh, budget, uh, preparation and, and budget, uh, presentations. So, we want to give ample opportunity for the community to interact with us and, and provide their thoughts on, on the budget. It's certainly going to be a challenging year. I think we all recognize that. Um, starting early, again, February second, March second, April thirteenth. And the board is, uh, not scheduled to adopt the budget until April thirteenth. So, that provides, you know, three opportunities over the, the course of the, the prior three months, uh, for the community to provide feedback on, on budget development, which we think is, uh, obviously critical in, uh, in terms of achieving a successful budget vote. So, that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Carlson, just, um, with the community budget forums, um, I know when we've done them in the past, we had like specific information, I think, um, for each meeting. But I think it'd be important to make sure we include whatever updates we have on the, uh, state aid or any kind of aid. Um, in addition to just the normal budget updates that we would be doing yearly anyway. But that piece is, I think, most crucial because we, we, right now, have no idea how the budget's going to look as you continue to work, you know, from your end through things. So, um, I think that piece, especially so the community has as many opportunities to hear whatever latest updates we have on that.
Yes, and in advance of that February second meeting, we will have two budget presentations preceding that February second meeting. So, it'll be a good opportunity to gauge the feedback of what was discussed in those prior two meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I just ask, uh, one thing in regards to, to try to put this in perspective, the shortfall. I know we don't know where we will be, what to base it upon, what it looks like. But I guess the last time we had something like this was, I guess, after the two thousand eight crash. How did, is there a way to put this in perspective to that, or they're just two totally separate entities?
I- in terms of the impact on the budget and, uh, the staffing decisions that we were forced into?
Yeah.
Uh, unfortunately, I wasn't here at the time, but, uh, I could probably do some research and, and find out what, you know, what the impact was. Um, you know, it's certainly a, a daunting task to, um, you know, to look back on what, what happened in that year. Uh, I, I want to say it was ten eleven was the, uh, the year of, uh, of the reduction.
Yeah.
So, sure, I, I could, I could certainly try to do some research and find out what, what the impact.
And that is too crazy, just, uh, just a, a perspective, so we could try to figure out if, what do we do then that we can do better this time? And I know you're all on top of it, so that's not the question, it's the rest of us. Thanks, Victor.
Sure.
Scott, I think your point's good in terms of, you know, can we learn from it and do anything better? Um, I think if I recall, I think that was kind of the beginning for me. It was like, it started, and then I remember coming in the board and crying all the time because we just kept letting people go. And here I wanted to, you know, reduce class size. Um, I re- and this number could be completely wrong, but I, I thought it was somewhere around, um, uh, I have fifty and one fifty in my head for some reason. So, I think it was something like the equivalent of, um, you know, fifty full-time positions, but it was like a hundred fifty people that ultimately were let go. Like, if you combined all the different people from all the different departments, it was kind of like fifty full-time positions. But it really was like around a hundred fifty people. So, something like that. I don't know the exact numbers, so, because it was a while, it was years ago now. But, um, but I do remember just being devastated, devastated by what we had to do. Um, you know, with sports, we looked at what did, but again, we weren't in a pandemic. We looked at what the town provided. Um, so that we could, you know, maybe not duplicate efforts and try to find ways for kids to have, it's just at least an outlet for everything. Um, so, I don't know how it would look in, in a pandemic time because some of the similar, some of the things we did then, we can't even consider now. because some of the similar, some of the things we did then, we can't even consider now. So, but yeah, I, I think the information is definitely there somewhere, but it was, it was definitely, it was devastating, you know, just from what I recall a little bit, wanted to share that. Anyone else have questions or comments? Sorry. Hopefully, we doesn't come to that. Hopefully, the, you know, stated comes through. All right, I don't, not hearing anyone else with any comments. So Victor, thank you. And next up is our policy discussion. So Dr. Banlow, I'm not sure if you want to introduce it. I know we have our, we, we brought in our attorneys today to help us with this discussion. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely, I'll help you out. Dr. Gosh is going to be sharing this part of our presentation agenda. And I just want to introduce Mr. Jim Drohan, one of our board attorneys. And also with us is Ms. Allison Smith. So Dr. Gosh?
Yes, good evening again. Several board meetings ago, the board had an extensive discussion on policy eleven-ten, School Board Legal Status and Authority, when we submitted it the first time around for a first read approval. Since that time, the Policy Committee has reviewed the concerns and suggestions and are ready to submit for a second read approval this evening. Prior to that, however, we have asked Ms. Smith and Mr. Drohan to come and share some of the legal foundations to this policy. So at this point, I will turn it over to them.
Thank you, Michelle. Yeah, so Jim and I wanted to go over a little bit about board members and the First Amendment. Because I understand that the, a lot of the questions that the board had related to the language in the policy that we are trying to add about board members speaking, you know, on the internet, on social media, and when we can or cannot control their speech and how the First Amendment comes into play with that. So we just have two slides, and then we can talk more specifically about the policy language. And I know that, you know, the board members probably have a couple of questions. So generally speaking, there's two ways. We have the board member wearing their hat as an individual, and we have the board member wearing their hat as a board member. So the key is that there needs to be a distinction when a board member is speaking to the public. So when a board member is speaking as a board member, the board does have the right to limit board members from speaking on behalf of the board or on behalf of the district. And the district does have policy language that talks about that, that only certain board members are authorized to speak on behalf of the entire board or on behalf of the district. However, if a board member, you know, certainly many of you or many other board members might have social media accounts, you might have your own personal Facebook page, your own personal Instagram account, whatever it might be. And the question really comes up as to what right do they have to speak? And at what point can the board, as a whole, limit or sanction, for lack of a better term, what that board member is saying over the internet? So I don't know, Jim, if you wanted to talk about the First Amendment in terms of speaking as an individual?
Sure, just a couple principles. Number one, as the trustees all know, it's good for the public to know, the law is very clear that because you have become a trustee, you do not thereby relinquish any of your rights to free speech that you have as a citizen. So you still have your right to speak on matters of public concern as long as you're making it clear as a trustee that you're speaking as an individual and not as a member of the board or for the board itself. And that's basically the big distinction between your individual rights and your rights as a trustee. Second thing to keep in mind is that the law with regard to the First Amendment and how it protects trustees is not the same exactly as the First Amendment considerations for students or employees in the school setting. Why is that? Because the Supreme Court has been very cognizant of the fact that when students are in school, in that particular environment, there are particular needs for the school not to be disrupted, not for the order of the school to be disrupted, not for the discipline to be disrupted. So there's a test that goes back fifty years at this point or more that says that students don't have the same rights as adults would outside the school to the First Amendment. But if you could reasonably anticipate as a school administrator that what they're doing by wearing a shirt or protesting or whatever will cause a substantial disruption to the school setting, then the school can act on it and discipline if necessary. And teachers, employees, a little bit different too, because they are the teacher. As an employee, the board can, within certain constraints, tell the teacher what to talk about in the school setting, in the classroom, because that's what you're paying the teacher to talk to the students about. Their rights, however, when they're in public or writing a letter to the editor, those are protected. The board members themselves aren't in the school setting. So the law with regard to their first amendment protections is probably broader than it is with regard to students or employees. And the basic idea is that you can't retaliate against the board member for exercising their free speech rights as an individual. And you can't punish them for that. But what you can act upon is if at some point they violate your policy twelve-thirty, which says if they engage in misconduct, if they engage in a violation of a statute, such as the statutes that say what you talk about in executive session has to stay confidential. They were to accept basically a gift in return as a, for doing a favor. Those types of things the board can act upon. The problem with putting very specific free speech language into a policy is that you run the risk of punishing the bad with the good. So if I'm a trustee and I'm seated next to, to the board president, and every time she tries to call for a motion or for a second, I disrupt that by standing on the table and stabbing my feet or hitting, hitting my shoe against the wall, that would be disruptive. And you could punish the board member for that, even though arguably it's protected, even though arguably it's speech. But the thing is, what they're doing is they're obstructing a board meeting, and that has other implications. However, if I, instead of bumping my shoe on the table, I instead raise points of order with regard to the motions, that speech, from some perspective, it may be disrupting the board meeting, but that would be protected speech. So there are time, place, and manner restrictions on speech. What a teacher can say at a board meeting or in a letter to the editor, they may not be able to say in the classroom. So that's why you have to be careful about having very specific language on the First Amendment about what trustees can say and can't say. Because if there ever is a situation when you have to address it, you have to look at the time, the speech, the place of the speech, and the manner in which it was spoken. And specifically, was it clear whether the trustee was speaking as an individual as a trustee? Kind of rambled on too long, why don't you go ahead, Allison?
No, that's fine. So we put a couple of examples here where, you know, other examples of how speech might be able to be limited, when even if a board member is speaking as an individual. For example, if they are defaming somebody, if they are trying to incite violence, if they disclose confidential information either from exec or perhaps FERPA-protected information, that is speech that can be potentially looked into. Now, another issue is that, and this is language that we have proposed as part of the revision to the policy, is that the board won't retaliate against a board member solely for their speech. So we put here a test that the Commissioner of Education recently set forth in determining whether the board's action to remove a board member is seen as retaliatory. The two questions are, first, were that board member's actions protected by the First Amendment? And then second, was the board's conduct directly in response to that protected speech is the sole reason that the board took action to remove that board member because of the protected speech? Or was there something in addition? So again, for, it was the speech disclosing confidential information from executive session that then ruined your collective bargaining negotiations? And is that the reason that you removed them? Not solely because they were speaking as an individual?
So stated differently, if you engage in protected speech, speech protected by the First Amendment as a trustee, you enjoy that protection. But it doesn't become basically a get-out-of-jail-free card. Because then if you do something that's not protected by the First Amendment, like Allison said, disclosing information from executive session, and you do that intentionally and repeatedly, the fact that you had previously engaged in protected speech about some political issue isn't going to protect you. So you may both be removed for exercising in this conduct, even though you previously engaged in speech that was protected. What you, the board can't do is remove someone solely because they engage in protected speech.
Right, and if you go to the next slide, Jim, you know, already touched on this, but these are the times when a board member can be removed. They have to, the misconduct has to relate to their official duties. Either they use their power in an unauthorized manner. As Jim said before, if they take a gift in, in, and in exchange for voting a certain way on a resolution, or they intentionally fail to exercise those powers to the detriment of the district and using confidential information to further their own personal interests would be another way under the general municipal law that would subject a board member to removal as well. So I don't know, Jim, if you have any other comments on that specifically? We can talk about the, the policy language.
No, I think we're absolutely free to entertain questions from the board superintendent at this point.
I just have a clarifying question. So if, for example, I'm just making this up, we are, like, right now, we're in a board meeting, whether remote or in person, and a trustee says something, whatever, in that moment, does, do we need to be clarifying? Because we know we often have discussion, right, on action items. We have questions and comments and stuff like that. So when does a trustee need to clarify, I'm speaking on behalf of myself in this moment? Is it just understood they're speaking on behalf of themselves? Does it go without saying? You know, at what point would someone who might do something that could violate one of the rules be considered them acting on behalf of themselves if they haven't clarified that? So I think, you know, we understand, I think, based on what you've said, okay, they're at home. You know, we are wherever we are in our private world. But if we are physically actually at a board meeting or in a school building, what distinction has to be made? I mean, is it just, because I, I, you know, some people might assume, oh, it's a board member, they're standing here, they say something, you're talking on behalf of everyone because you're all standing together. So how do you work through those kinds of potential issues?
Okay, so a couple of examples. If, you know, Mr. Carlson or the superintendent are giving a, a presentation on the budget when it comes up, and I, as a new trustee, say, well, you know, I'm completely in favor of the budget, this is a great budget, you have to vote for the budget. I have a bumper sticker on my car that says, vote for the budget. You might say, as the board president at that time, Mr. Drohan, would you like to clarify those remarks? And just set forth to the public whether that's your personal opinion as opposed to, you're not representing, you're speaking on behalf of the board because that's a, a specific time when you have to make that distinction. Or if they're doing something, frankly, that might get the rest of the board in hot water. They say some, they say something defamatory. You know, that, something about Allison's, Allison's history, or she says something about me and my history, that would tend to hold me up to, you know, to ridicule or might make me lose my job. Then, if there's something defamatory or one of those other categories that's not protected speech, what the board might want to do is simply say, you know, I for one am saying that I'm not endorsing what he says. You're not speaking for the board when you do that. And, you know, you want to basically draw that distance to say, I don't want anyone thinking that when he or she made those remarks, that they were made on behalf of the board, even though it is in a public setting. So those, those are the two things that come to mind. When someone goes outside the circle, engages something that's not protected speech and could be harmful to a third party, or when, because you're sitting at the board table, the public might misunderstand and think that remarks you're saying about your personal opinions are really going to be attributed to the board as a whole, like with the budget.
Okay, thank you. And as a follow-up, in, for example, the example where you said it's not a protected speech item, it's something defamatory, then can, and I think here's where the most confusing part is. I think one of the things in the first slide that you guys showed was inciting violence or something. So, you know, if someone says something, they, it's their own personal opinion, and I have my right to my free speech. But if, if there are people who on the board say, you know what, I, I think that could lead to people interpreting, you know, a direction of action that could be destructive, you know, can, I mean, I think it's situation by situation, you have to evaluate things, like you said. What types of action can be taken by a board?
So if it's happening on the spot, you can say, you know, I, I for one am not endorsing what Mr. Drohan said. The way, that's his personal opinion, he doesn't speak for the board. And in fact, I think his remarks could be interpreted as a call for people to riot or engage in violence against other people. And I for one am not condoning that. And I, I would ask the rest of the board, you know, if they agree with me. And if it persists, at some point, the board could also entertain a motion in public session to say, you know, you can't actually censure a board member, or you can't reprimand, but you could make clear by a motion adopted by the remainder of the board that those remarks are attributable solely to that one trustee, and the rest of the board neither encourages it or subscribes to it nor supports him for saying that. Just to make clear that, to the public, that that's where you will stand.
Okay, and removal, does that, can there be one situation or is it be multiple situations to get to a point of removal?
In most of the cases, it's more than one, where it's been release of confidential information. There's no rule that says it has to be more than one situation. Typically, a pattern, because that tends to show the behavior was intentional, and you don't get a mulligan or just a one-off because, well, I didn't know the rule. It becomes more harder to, to credibly say you didn't know the rule if it's the second or the third time, except for things like violence. Remember one case many years ago when a board member was actually removed punching another board member, or they haven't seen those days for many years. But that physical violence would be one instance that comes to mind where, you know, it's, you know, you don't get a second chance.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if anyone else on the board has questions right now?
Yeah, I have, I have a question. So.
A question, I'm sorry. All right, go ahead, Eric.
Jason will go next.
All right, thanks, Jim. So in the prior slides and in this conversation, we're talking about removal from office. Who institutes that process? How does it go through? And if we don't have, second part of that question, if there isn't something, if, if some of the speech is protected, are there still remedies? Should the public as, as the, the, the electing body of, of all of us, do they have remedies if it were something that maybe doesn't necessarily rise to the level of removal, but something that, that the public can do?
So the, the rules of the commissioner really don't allow for anything less than removal. It's basically capital punishment or nothing, because you don't have the right to censure. What you can do if it's somewhere in the middle, as, as we discussed a moment ago, is distance the rest of the board from a remark made by the, the objectionable remark by the other trustee. The, the remedy that the member of the public would have is that they could always petition the Commissioner of Education within thirty days under Section three-ten of the Education Law for removal, and the commissioner would decide whether that's appropriate. The other way it can happen is that the board itself could convene a hearing, you know, which would be a public hearing unless there is some reason for going to executive session with representation by counsel on both sides, where after they drew up written charges and the trustee who was charged responded, any hearing could take place. And depending on what the outcome is, whoever doesn't agree with the ultimate decision could then appeal to the Commissioner of Education. So by the way, it goes to the commissioner, whether directly by a petition of assistance or by the trustees themselves could go to the commissioner or the board itself could have a hearing, and then that's appealable to the Commissioner of Education. And the, I apologize, the last part I didn't answer, but that's actually in the, the Buffalo case that Allison had in one of the slides involving Mr. Palladino. And in fact, that was the situation there, where it was alleged that part of it might have been protected speech, where he made some remarks that were, he felt were protected speech about the former First Lady, the former President of the United States, which the rest of the trustees found to be horrible and very objectionable. He claimed that that was free speech. And the commissioner ultimately removed him. The commissioner had a hearing in that case because he said, you know, regardless of whether he's engaged in free speech, there's an independent basis for removing him, and that's because he engaged in misconduct by disclosing confidential information about collective bargaining during executive session on, on one occasion, as I recall. So that, 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 that's how it goes. You can have some protected speech, but you could still be subject to removal if what you did that wasn't protected is something that, that rises to the level of misconduct, just to find removal.
And I also note that policy twelve, the board policy twelve-thirty does have a section on removal, and it has a timeline. It involves serving a copy of charges on the. does have a section on removal, and it has a timeline, it involves serving a copy of charges on the board member who you're proposing to remove, and there's a 10-day time before designating a hearing. So the board does have a policy in place that would govern such an instance.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Jason?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, I saw the slides, and I'm, I have a scenario in my head, which is doesn't seem to be captured by your slides, and maybe it is, but I guess you'll let me know. So I'm, I'm thinking of a scenario where it is conversation or it's speech outside of a board outside the, as we're doing now. And it's, it's, I don't know, it's on Facebook, it's on Instagram, it's making a speech in the park. But basically, the speech by this trustee or board member is saying something like, and I'm gonna be frank, all black people are monkeys and apes, and they should be caged. And it's disrupted the school, all the kids and teachers know about it, there's protests for days, kids can't go to school, board, you know, during the board meetings, there's outrage, and the board can't perform its functions. What happens in that case?
So it's very fact-specific. The board would have to decide whether, based upon the trustee's remarks, whether the trustee engaged in misconduct, that warrants removal. The trustee would probably argue that the fact that many people found the remarks, or maybe everybody found the remarks to be offensive, doesn't necessarily mean it's not protected by the First Amendment, that presumably be the defense. And then there'd be a hearing, and just like in the case from Buffalo, the commissioner would ultimately have to decide, and the board would have to decide, that even if part of it was protected speech, was the disruption that was caused, that round the work of the board and the administration of the schools to a halt, was that a sufficient basis for the removal of the trustee?
What about, what about the, what about the fact that there's black children in school? That the, what about that? Would that factor in any of the decision, you think? I mean, this is the Board of Education who's over these kids in the school, and this board member thinks that these black kids should be in cages.
Yeah, that would certainly come up, and the issue, the issue would be, does the trustee's rights to free speech outweigh the board's interest in making sure that this doesn't prevent kids from going to school because they are so offended, or for parents not sending the kids to school before, because they think this is such a horrible act, that it really makes them feel like they shouldn't be secure in going to school, this is how a trustee acts.
Would, would you think it's more than just an offense? Fifth, sixth, third, second grader, wouldn't you think it would be more than just a kid being offended? Isn't that, doesn't that go to the, the child's education?
I absolutely agree with you. I think the issue's gonna be, is the conduct, even though arguably it's protected by the First Amendment, is it causing kids not to go to school? And there are cases with teachers, I will say, because teachers are slightly different, because they're in the classroom, right? And they're specifically role models. It's not as clear that Board of Education trustees are role models, but that's probably what the argument would be in the hearing. And the issue would be, even if you're entitled to your rights to free speech, have parents voted with their feet by stopping their kids from going to school, so therefore the schools really can't operate in that instance.
What about trauma? I'm, I'm, I'm sorry to come, what about trauma?
That's okay, absolutely, that, that would be part of the proof. There was a case involving a teacher, and again, that's why I started at the beginning, the trustees, there's not as many cases with trustees, honestly. Most of the cases are about teachers and about children, students. But there was a case with a teacher, who I think taught at the Bronx High School of Science, and he was a member of NAMBLA, the National Association of Man-Boy Love. And ultimately, the parents who found out about this, because there was something on the TV about it, felt that they didn't feel safe sending their children to that high school class, and the court said ultimately, even though he might have a free speech right to, you know, decide that's how he wants to go, and to be a member of that association, he's also a role model, and if it stopped the classroom from functioning, because the kids couldn't go to the class, that would be sufficient reason for removing that teacher, and they upheld the teacher's termination. The one question I would give you there is that that was a teacher, and specifically decided on the role in the classroom, but the arguments would be much the same if there were a hearing. It just, what I would say is that the trustees' rights, if they're not in the classroom, are a little bit different. But the discussions would be much the same if there were a hearing.
So if I can just maybe add here, to kind of maybe have this all make sense, it seems to me that if there's a situation, whatever the scenario, that's egregious enough, and the majority of the board thinks there's enough of a case, it goes to a hearing, right? There, I, I'm not hearing that there is a situation that in a moment, a board can just vote and say, okay, we're removing you because you're, we think that you're out of line. It actually, there's a process that has to ensue based on the opinion.
Yes, there's due process, and that's what the hearing is. Any due process is basically you get notice of the charges, an opportunity to respond, representation by counsel, and that's what's in, in your regulation and in the laws.
Our current policy. So that's, so Jason, to your, to your questions, that's when all those concerns would come up, would be in a hearing, because there has to be a process that, that formally removes someone because they were elected.
Of course, I get due process, sure, sure, sure.
Yeah, so, okay, so
Mr. Drone, I just, one last question for John. State education hearing cases, or were those also, were there any Supreme Court cases? That's out there on, on this subject?
Not, not board trustees that I'm aware of. The case that I, the Palladino case from Buffalo, it's actually in federal court, because he, at last I checked, was still suing that board over alleged violations of his First Amendment rights. The commissioner's decision removing him was a decision from the commissioner of education, which is where it usually goes. The case I mentioned involving the teacher, that went to the United States Court of Appeals for the Second Circuit, which is down at Foley Square, and that's really one rung below the United States Supreme Court. So there are cases, teachers and free speech, several have gone to the Supreme Court, but none off the top of my head that involves a trustee. So the law is just a little bit less developed with the trustee than it is with teachers or students. There are many teacher and student cases on free speech and discipline that's gone to the Supreme Court. It's actually a fairly favorite topic of theirs.
One, one last thing, would, would you say if that, the conduct that I stated, if that happened on multiple occasions, and again, the Board of Education could, just could not do their work? It couldn't get through their board sessions, they, they couldn't do anything. Would that also be something that would be taken into consideration?
That would be a consideration, but again, what the trustee would likely argue is, well, you know, at what point does, do my free speech rights yield to, you know, the, the operation of the board? So it's, I think it's a fact-specific inquiry, and it's a question of degree, how bad has it become? And how protected is the speech? So that's why you gotta be careful, I think, by trying to codify every situation into your policy, because you have to look at the specific circumstances and how strong the free speech right is, and how strong the disruption claim is.
Right. Okay.
Okay, I know you still need to put up the policy just so we can look at it, but did anyone else have any questions right now?
I just, I guess, maybe we'll see it in the policy. Could I just hear, I mean, I read through it, I couldn't figure out what was new, what was up. What is the new point of the policy and the general reasoning behind it?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I can speak to that if we put the, if Michelle can put the policy up. So the paragraph at issue is a little farther down when she gets to it. So it's this paragraph that starts with, members of the board are free to speak as individuals. So the, the, the sentence at issue is this last sentence here. And this is new language that we proposed based on our understanding of the board's comments pre, after the first read. So the new language says that the board is also generally prohibited from taking action against a fellow board member solely for the exercise of their First Amendment rights, or in retaliation for exercising such rights when that board member is acting as an individual. So it was our understanding that the board was looking to set forth in the policy, generally speaking, when their hands are tied in a way, when, so that the public understood that there are certain times when a board member does speak as an individual, and the board cannot necessarily remove that board member for that speech. So this was our proposed language with using words like generally to couch the fact that some, like Jim just said, that there, we can't capture all situations in a policy. So this was the proposed new language. It goes along with additional language that you are putting in a regulation, and later on in this policy about social media use and speaking as an individual versus speaking as a board member on social media as well.
Would you like to see the regulation as well?
Yeah.
Ms. Masika?
Yes.
Right, so this regulation, we didn't, I, we personally didn't change, I'm not sure if there were any other modifications to it since the first read, but this regulation is generally talking about appropriate use of social media by board members without, again, this policy was carefully crafted, or regulation was carefully crafted to make sure that the regulation itself did not infringe on a board member's freedom of speech, but at the same time sets forth, you know, professional standards when a board member is speaking on behalf of the board. I believe there actually were questions about
Yes.
The first, was it the first bullet, Michelle?
Yes, we, there was a discussion at the, the fir, after the first read board meeting about the use of logo, and when the appropriate use of that would be. So we ended up removing that, because it was, we decided it was not, given the concerns, it was not necessary or relevant to the, to the regulation and what we were trying to get across.
Okay, yeah, that's helpful, and I agree, it's just, I think Logo was trying to refer to something, and it was too vague. So that, the way it's worded now, I think is helpful. And I have a question, can either, either, I guess, the one 1110 policy or regulation can either, maybe probably the policy, can it reference within the policy, Policy 1230, where you said it outlines procedures in particular cases? So while 1110 talks about we're prohibited from taking action against a fellow board member, et cetera, can we just have a sentence that says circumstances, you know, under which whatever, oh, there it is, can be found, certain exceptions to a three, no. But maybe in addition to that, just, you know?
Yeah, we could put that in that paragraph that we were looking at. We could say something along the lines of procedures for potential removal of board members are set, is set forth in Policy 1230.
Yeah, I think something like that's simple enough, just kind of balanced to that statement, and then it, you know.
Right, I think I agree, because it demonstrates that what we're talking about here, there is a due process procedure for dealing with it, should it become an issue?
Right.
And then we'll cross-reference it at the bottom as well.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
This is super minor, but I would take out, in that highlighted language that you were just looking at, I don't think it should say fellow board member, because it starts out with the board is not, is generally prohibited from taking action, it would be just against a board member. Because it's board versus board member, not board member versus board member.
Sure, that makes sense.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So just, just quickly, the, the language, the board member is also generally, I guess we, we put, I think you said this, we put generally in there just to show that there are exceptions?
Correct, that's, yeah, that's to cap, to cover the exceptions that we spoke of defamation, inciting violence, disclosing confidential information, because those are times where a board member is speaking with, you know, they're exercising their First Amendment rights, but we, the board does have some reason to take action against them. So that's why we use generally.
Are we also, are we talking about outside of board here? Outside of board events? Are we talking about during board sessions?
Either one. It's any, you know, Jim mentioned, you know, there could be times when a board member is speaking as an individual during a board meeting, but it could also be you posted on social media confidential information from executive session. That information, even though it wasn't at a board meeting, could potentially lead to a removal procedure, depending on the circumstances.
I, I just, I just feel like, and you may not agree with me, but I just feel like it doesn't, it doesn't capture the fact that there could be exceptions to this, like, there, there could be scenarios, situations out there where people say certain things, and it's, it's just, it's disrupt, disruptive to the board, and it, it just can't, they, certain, certain things. We, we all know that, that First Amendment rights aren't absolute, and it just, statement to me just doesn't capture, doesn't capture the fact that there, there are exceptions.
Well, I think that's why we're Jason, I think that's why this, the suggestion I had was to add the sentence after this, to finish the paragraph with a sentence stating, for the situation, the, the circumstances under which that action can be taken, please refer to Policy 1230.
Can I, can I just stand in response to Mr. Whitehead's concern that really if the board member engages in something which is so disruptive that the board feels that it has to go to the commissioner, bring a hearing, really what you're going after them for is the conduct, the disruption, rather than the content of the speech itself. Because their rights to the content of what they say, unless it's defamatory or threatening or inciting a riot, is probably going to be protected. What might not be protected, though, is the effect, the disruption. So really, you're not really going after them for the exercise of their First Amendment rights, you're really going after them for the disruption that it's caused, which is something different. And that, that's how I think those two things kind of hang together, the way I see it.
Yeah, I, I definitely hear that, Mr. Drone, and I definitely agree with that. But I tend to disagree a little bit on, when, when you go back to my scenario, in terms of the, you know, black children should be in cages. I mean, you go back to Brown v. Board of Ed, and we know the psychological component of that case. And I think there's a strong argument to be made that if somebody does say that about black children to be in cages, and we have a bunch of elementary school black children, I think that would be a really big argument against, you know, a, a, a school board trustee that would make such comments on multiple occasions. So I, I definitely hear what you're saying on the, the two different aspects, but I think the psychol, psychology of that would be a really, a, a argument against that trustee.
Understood.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yeah.
Sorry, can we go back to that? That last, that sentence, that highlighted sentence? Thank you. So, um, just in reading this, and if, if anybody ever wondered what a policy committee meeting really looks like, this is kind of it, you know, going over punctuation and where words are placed and stuff. But as I read that sentence, it seems a little bit confusing, because on both sides of the or the sentence is very similar, or, or the, 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 the thought that apparently is being put forward is very similar, except for the part that it's acting as an individual. So in that sense, does that say, are those two separate scenarios? That the board is also generally prohibited from taking, from one, taking action against a fellow board member solely for the exercise of the First Amendment rights, or two, in retaliation for exercising such rights when that board member is acting as an individual? Or is acting as an, is acting as an individual applicable to both sides of the or? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does, yeah.
Can you put a period after board member and take out, is acting as an individual?
That's fine. I think that gets the thought across.
Because it's, either way, it, it's true under any scenario.
Yeah.
Can, is it, I can't even tell, is it being, we're not amending it at this moment, are we, in this live? I don't
I was going to ask if we, I can incorporate all the changes and just put it back on the December policy?
Okay.
December board agenda?
That's fine, right? Okay. Okay, anyone else have anything they'd like to ask about the policies or share? Okay. So, thank you, everyone. You know, it's important. I know we have our, you know, as Eric knows, he's on the policy committee. And I thank you all for doing that work because it's not easy because it's exactly this type of conversation. And when people ask about policy committees, so technically the board could sit here and do this exact thing for every single policy that comes by and gets changed, which is but that's why we have a committee that we put in place to do this work and have a separate schedule to work through because, you know, there's just hundreds of policies. So.
And I would just like to point out that Carrie is also on the policy committee.
Oh, thank you, Carrie. I didn't know that. I'm
Okay.
But.
I was gonna say, I think we made Victor feel better because he he always thinks that his presentations are boring, but I mean, we nailed it on that one.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
So thank you, everyone, and thank you for working through this policy and we'll get it back on. Is it on today's agenda as a first read?
It's on as a second read, I believe.
As this it says, no, it says first read, policy 1110.
Okay.
So we can actually approve it as is because we went through it as a first read and the next agenda will be a second read, right? So it's so we can approve it as is because we've we've hashed it out now. So we'll get to that later, but it's okay. So where are we? Let's take a look at the agenda. So just I want to thank the our attorneys for being on for this discussion. It was truly helpful because otherwise we would just be asking questions without answers and it was really helpful. So thank you so much.
Thank you for having us. The questions were excellent.
Thank you.
Right to the heart.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bye bye. Thank you.
So next up is the NISBA annual meeting recap, which we had a work session on and we went through, you know, how you all wanted me to vote for that. And I was going to recap that. There's other information about the NISBA convention. I'd actually like to ask for a motion to table that item because we still have some more to go here, action items, and then we still have executive session after. So I think if we just table it and then plan a work session for November 24th at 7:30 PM where we can just recap the annual meeting. And also at that meeting, I'd like to add the survey that went out to the community. There was a board question in there. And if we can just take some time in that work session to look that over as well. And the community, of course, is more than welcome to observe that work session because it's not a regular meeting, no actions taken. But would you all be okay with tabling this? And if so, can I have a motion to 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 table it? Actually, first, the motion we discussed, if you are okay with it. So are we? Can we have a motion for tabling this?
Let's carry. I'll make the motion.
Thank you. In a second.
Eric, I'll make the second.
Okay. So yeah, are we okay with skipping this?
What was the date you gave, Sonia?
November 24th, Tuesday, 7:30 PM. So we can still confirm that in email, but okay, is anyone dying to have me go over the votes right now? Not hearing anyone. Okay, so just we'll go to the vote on tabling this item. Carrie?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes, but I do want to say the recorded meetings expire the end of December. So if anybody wants to watch them, they have to do it before the end of December, the classes.
Okay, thank you. Francine?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
And myself, Sonia, yes. Motion to table this item passes seven zero. Okay, and thank you, Scott. You said the end of December? I think. Did you say end of December?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right. So now we go on to public remarks that came in in email specifically relating to any of our action items this evening. There is another opportunity where we will address. We do have emails that did come in that do not relate to the action items. We address those in the in the remarks part of our agenda, which comes up after the consent agenda. But for right now, did we have any? I don't think we did. Just double checking with the team. Do we have any emails that came in specific to action items?
No, I looked. I did not see any.
Okay.
I didn't. I didn't see any either.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you. So then we can move on to our action items. So first up is disposal of district property. A VHS textbooks, B transportation vehicles.
As both of these recommendations are coming from our principal and our supervisor of transportation in accordance with policy 5250. The two vehicles that we're disposing of are both requiring significant engine work or framework. One has been in use by the facilities department since 2017. And a third is being repurposed to the transportation department in lieu of that vehicle that's being disposed of.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion for this item, please.
So Scott, I make the motion.
Thank you. And a second?
Francine, I second.
Thank you. Okay, questions or comments on this item?
I'd have one question regards to the books. I guess these are all just expired. We're on to the newest set of books for these things. They seem most of them are over 10, if not 20 years old.
Yes, and and you know, at times, you know, from building to building as clean out happens, sometimes we're disposing of books that haven't even been used in in several years.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, we go to the vote. Carrie?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Francine?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
And myself, Sonia, yes. If none opposed, the motion passes seven zero. Okay, action item number two, approval to participate in the New York School and Municipal Energy Consortium, NYSMC for cooperative energy purchase of electric and natural gas commodities.
Yeah, so we've been members of NYSMAC since 2006 and as indicated, we purchase commodities on a three year basis, which allows us, you know, number one, to achieve cost avoidance through cooperative purchasing and obviously economies of scale and also stability for budgeting purposes in the event of a large spike in either of those commodities.
Okay, thank you. I need a second. I mean, a motion for this item, please.
This is Daisy. I'll make the motion.
Thank you. And a second?
This is Jason. I'll second.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board?
Just want to thank Victor for saving us money. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, we go to the vote. Carrie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Francine?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
And myself, Sonia, yes, with none opposed, motion passes seven zero. Okay, action item number three, approval of tax refunds.
Yes, each of these tax refunds are the result of challenges to current year assessments, which results in in total $14,000 reduction in our current year revenues. They've been recalculated by our treasurer and reviewed by our attorneys and recommended, of course, for approval for payment.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion for this item.
Carrie, I'll make the motion.
Okay, Carrie, thank you. And Jason, I'll take you as a second. Questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing none, we can go to the vote. Carrie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Francine?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
And myself, Sonia, yes, with none opposed, motion passes seven zero. Action item number four, approval of 2020, 2021 instructional services contracts for a Carmel Central wait, is that backwards? SCD, extended school year and B Carmel Central School District school year.
Yes, these are two instructional service contracts for our special needs students based on their IPs. They've been reviewed by our attorneys and are recommended for approval by our Director of People Personnel Services.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion for this item.
This is Scott. I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Scott. I need a second.
Francine, I second.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to the vote. Carrie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Francine?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Myself, Sonia, yes, with no objections. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Action item number five, acceptance of enrollment projection report 2021, 22 through 2025, 26.
Yes, as indicated in the presentation, each year we have an independent demographer prepare enrollment projection report. Statistical forecasting LLC is our independent demographer and their report is available for your review and will be placed on the district website tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion for this item.
This is Daisy. I'll make the motion.
Thank you. In a second.
Jason, I'll second.
Thank you. Questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing none, we can go to the vote. Carrie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Francine?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Myself, Sonia, yes, with none opposed, motion passes seven zero. Okay, action number six, approval of annual New York State and local retirement system standard work day reporting resolution.
Yes, this establishes a standard workday for appointed officials who are not covered by a terms and conditions agreement or a collective bargaining agreement. In Brewster, we have one such employee, the tax collector who works for the town of Southeast, and we pay a stipend for collecting taxes on behalf of the school district.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion for this item, please.
Carrie, I'll make the motion.
Thank you. In a second.
Jason, I'll second it.
Thank you, Jason. Eric, I think I saw you talking, but you were muted.
I hit the spacebar and all of a sudden the the agenda on my screen started moving all over. Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I'll do better next time. I promise.
Okay, so Jason got the second. So any questions or comments on this? Okay, hearing none, we can go to the vote. Carrie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Scott?
Sure, yes.
Francine?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Myself, Sonia, yes, with none opposed, the motion passes seven zero. Action item number seven, approval of policies first read, policy 1110, school board legal status and authority and regulation 1110R, policy 5741, drug and alcohol testing for bus drivers, policy 7530, child abuse and maltreatment, policy 7240, student records and 7240R, policy 5676, privacy and security for student data and teacher and principal data.
Thank you. Should we amend the action item?
It's a
Oh, it's first read. Great. I heard at the first. Okay, thank you. Yes. So these policies have been reviewed by our attorneys and our policy committee, and we submit them to you for first read approval.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion for this item, please.
I'm gonna defer to Eric.
I will make that motion. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. Eric, I need a second.
That will screw up. That will screw up Francine now because now she's on the clock.
Now you totally messed me up.
All right, Scott, thank you for the second. So questions or comments? I'll just say that we discussed it's a first read and we did have a discussion earlier, so we are okay if you're so inclined to approve them tonight because it's a first read and there's still a second read for final approval. So any other questions or comments on any of these policies? Okay, hearing none, we can go to the vote. Carrie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Francine?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Myself, Sonia, yes, with none opposed, the motion passes seven zero. Action item number eight, approval of amended employment contracts.
Yes, I'll take this. This is coming before the board, the approval to amend the contracts of Dr. Gosh, Mr. Carlson, and also Dr. Harrington. I want to thank them because they are offering to forego their salary increase this year in light of our present financial situation. But also I'd like to add that if our financial situation turns more into the positive, I'd love for the board to revisit it as the year goes on because as you know, they they just do a tremendous job. So but tonight I'm just asking for approval to amend the employment contracts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion for this item, please?
Francine, I make a motion.
And a second?
This is Daisy. I'll make the second.
Thank you. Okay, questions or comments?
I would just comment that I, you know, appreciate that this voluntary act by, you know, these outstanding employees, and it's really just a great act of leadership on their part. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mrs.
I also want to say that once again, you know, the administration team is leading by example in a very tough time. So I appreciate all their work and they're willing to forego this at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Seaman.
And if I could just point out too, I mean, this is a very, it's a very difficult thing because obviously everyone in the district is probably working harder than they ever have. And so for them to to recognize sort of what the situation is, it's obviously not because they don't deserve salary raises. But for them to be able to 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 offer this to us is greatly appreciated, like I said, especially in these in these times when when they're working unprecedented. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gratzger.
I'll I'll just say that for you guys not to take increases, I think it's it's a it's just shows leadership and it's a model for the rest of the district. And I also noticed there was a provision in there from working from home five days, and I don't think that's nearly enough. I think you I think it should be at the discretion, I think, of the superintendent because I think you guys are like not sleeping. I mean, you all are great, but you guys are not sleeping. I see it. And we can tell by all the work that you're doing, but I definitely appreciate you guys, and I think the district appreciates you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitehead.
We're just we're lucky to have you guys as our as our head administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Santos.
Yes, we're very, very lucky. From the bottom of all of our hearts, thank you so much. You guys look fantastic despite you that you're not sleeping. You look fantastic. Muchas muchas gracias.
Thank you, Ms. Jimenez Vazquez.
Okay, I think that's everyone. So thank you. Hold on, I look up and then look off the paper and I lose my place. So comment. So I guess we can go on to our vote now. Okay, so Carrie, how do you vote on this item?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Francine?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Myself, Sonia, yes, with none opposed, the motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Okay, we are now on to action number nine, approval to abolish SEIU position.
Yes, thank you. So with each vacancy, of course, we're looking closely in terms of our our need and necessity of filling the respective vacancy. We've had two recent resignations in the title of school monitor with totals of 1.5 FTE. Given the circumstances, there is not a need to fill those positions. We've communicated with the SEIU per the contractual provisions to abolish 1.5 within that title. This resolution is subject to your approval to see. This resolution is, uh, subject to your approval this evening.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion for this item, please.
Jason, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, and a second?
Carrie, I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to the vote. Carrie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Francine?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Myself, Sonia, yes, with none opposed, the motion passes seven zero. And our last action item this evening is the approval of the Westchester-Putnam School Board Association Resolution for COVID Testing to Keep Schools Open. So, I will actually read it. I did attach, but I will read it and then, um, we'll motion and, and we can discuss. So, whereas school buildings in New York State were permitted to reopen in fall twenty twenty when statewide positivity rates were well below the five percent marker set by the governor if school districts fulfilled the COVID nineteen guidance of the New York State Department of Health and Education Department. And whereas New York State COVID nineteen community positivity rates have been climbing in November twenty twenty and surveillance testing is one mechanism used to track viral spread and help maintain the health and safety of our school communities. And whereas under the governor's micro cluster initiative, school-based random surveillance testing is mandated to keep school buildings open for in-person learning. And whereas public school districts have faced exceptional burdens on finances and administrative and faculty time and effort to ensure the health, safety and ongoing education of the young people of our state. And whereas schools in locations where community transmission rates have resulted in the designation of a micro cluster zone are not set up from a financial, logistical or regulatory perspective to take on the added burden of random surveillance testing. And whereas county departments of health are currently overwhelmed in coordinating the community-wide COVID nineteen pandemic. And whereas rapid antigen tested tests provided by the state to some school districts have been determined by public health professionals to be insufficiently accurate to permit a negative rapid test to clear individuals to reenter school buildings, necessitating a further round of testing that may require administration by medical personnel. And, this one's in italics, I'll discuss why in a second. Whereas school districts may desire to achieve the regulatory ability to pursue surveillance testing within their schools either as a district or working with an outside medical partner. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Brewster School District calls upon New York State leaders to ensure that public school districts receive the financial, logistical and regulatory support to undertake mandated or border-approved COVID nineteen surveillance testing of students, faculty and staff to ensure that school districts are not forced to keep school buildings closed due to lack of resources to ensure the safety of students and adults in school buildings. And then on the back, there'd be signature and then it says the Board of Education directs the district clerk to send a copy of this resolution to the following people. And, uh, all our government officials are listed, um, throughout the state. So, and just to further comment, the, the reason for the part in italics, it was put there in case, uh, some districts would like to have the option to not have to do this themselves, but instead be able to use an outside, you know, work with an outside medical partner to facilitate all this. Uh, and therefore get support and funding for that as well. So, um, a motion, please, for this item?
This is Daisy, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, and a second?
This is Eric.
Uh, Eric, you got it. Okay, you got the second. Okay, so questions or comments on this? And, uh, so the question or comment is, of course, do we want to put this forward? Do we want to, do we agree with this? Are you okay with the language regarding the, you know, we could do it ourselves and or working with an outside partner, it just gives the option by having that language there, we don't have to do that. So questions or comments on the resolution?
Yeah, from a, um, advocacy standard, I mean, anything that they're willing to put out there, I mean, we should do. Either language is fine. Just to let them know, you know, NISBA, Westchester-Putnam, they've been doing stuff and I know Victor brought up Transportation A drop. They have something for that. Uh, there's stuff for, um, all the, to get federal assistance, there's stuff to get. There's something right now they're looking to overturn the reduction in twenty percent, or at least to make it more rational. I mean, there's so many different groups that have been putting things out and if we're gonna really get on with this, I suggest we, we get on. There's a lot more advocacy items we could push, promote and send out. You know, even during the pandemic, they've been meeting with, um, they met with Senator Schumer, they went with Representative Maloney, Harkam. They're still keeping up the work and pushing for it and we all need to help, because you know, there's Victor, I don't, and we need to get Victor five million dollars, so we need to figure out a way to make that happen, but my suggestion, we go ahead with this and anything else we can do in a similar fashion, we appreciate it.
They did also provide, um, a form, like a sample letter for us to send to the community. So while this is something we're doing and we're going to submit to the state, we can also, um, I think it'd be good to update our board page and just include a, a, a part of it where, um, we could have our advocacy page. So this could be there and Scott, like you mentioned, all the other things going on. Um, and then just, you know, share with the community. And I thought this letter was written, well, I won't read it. But it, it's just, you know, how we can communicate to the community and I know Dr. Banlow is also going to put something out. So maybe, um, Dr. Banlow, I can work with you and it can come from the board and, and yourself and, um, you know, with this link in there for a voter voice link and they can just, when they get the letter, they can click on it right away as well as being on our website.
Sounds good.
Okay, um, anyone else? Any questions or comments on this?
So, Sonia, I would just, I would say this, I mean, I, I think it's, it's shameful that after all the work that's been done over the last few months and all the money that's been spent and all the effort that has gone into this, you know, I'm not going to ask, obviously, any, any sort of numbers or anything like that, but the fact is, is is that it, for as many people as we have quarantined in response to the, the restrictions that have been sent down, we're not seeing the schools being a, a place where this disease is really spreading. There's just too many precautions put in place. And for the schools to have to close or potentially bear this financial burden on top of all the other burdens that go along with trying to keep the schools open, we all know the benefits to having kids in school. And for, for this to become something where, uh, the schools have to close unless we, we get over this hurdle that is impossible to expect that we're going to be able to get over. I think it's, if, if, if the state is going to put these restrictions in place and give us these ways to potentially, um, keep the kids in school, then they should be finding a way to help us pay for it. Because, you know, they're not closing the schools because so many people are getting sick in the schools. We're closing the schools to, to get everybody to, to, to stop doing those, those other issues that are going on. So I, I, I think if this is the way that that we can move forward to keeping the schools open, then, then it's, it's up to the, the state government to come up with the money to, to, to make that happen.
Yeah, I think even if we had the money, it would be a waste of money to try to, you know, test all these kids and you're just opening Pandora's box of a whole nother issue, you know, of false positives, et cetera. Uh, I mean, this was an empty, you know, gift from the state, um, as usual and you know, it's meaningless, so I'm all for the resolution.
Okay. Okay, great. Um, all right, thank you. So we can go to the vote. Carrie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Scott?
Amen, yes.
Francine?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
And myself, Sonia, yes, with none opposed, the motion passes seven zero. Okay, we are on to the consent agenda.
Uh, yes, thank you. Just very quickly, the board may note, uh, we have a leave of absence for our high school assistant principal and, and behalf of my colleagues at the district office, we want to extend our congratulations to Lauren Cole, who gave birth to a beautiful baby boy, Greg Cole, AKA Trey, uh, just a few days ago. So congratulations, Lauren.
Okay, thank you. Uh, motion, please, for this item?
This is Scott, I'll make the motion.
In a second?
This is Francine, I second.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board?
I just have one question. I know the provision five is the the home care. What's, uh, provision one, two and three?
They are all related to, uh, COVID quarantine or symptoms of COVID.
Okay.
So they're all subject to ten-day COVID health, uh, paid leave.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, uh, we can go to the vote. Carrie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Francine?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Myself, Sonia, yes. And with, uh, none opposed, the motion passes seven zero. Okay, uh, we now move on to, uh, public remarks. So here is where we would address any emails that came in on any other topics. And, um, actually, well, public remarks and the next one's summary of emails, so they're combined now into one. So Carrie, if I can ask you to, um, share with us what came in this, in the past two weeks?
Sure. Um, we have three emails to, um, talk about. The, the first one, um, to summarize, basically questions why when the kids are at home because of quarantines. So all the kids are learning from home, why the teachers are in the school teaching from the school and just questioning whether that increases the risks to the teacher and unnecessary traffic flow in the school.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Cunningham. So first, I want to say I really appreciate all the thoughtful emails and suggestions that come, come in. And, um, to answer that email, any decision that we make to keep our staff in our buildings is made in conjunction with the Department of Health and our medical director. At no time would we ever, and I know there's probably a lot of rumors out there, and no time would we ever allow staff to be in a building if the Department of Health or a medical director is telling us that it's not safe. We work closely with all of our collective bargaining groups, so there's constant communication. So I just wanted to, to just, uh, to share that. So, uh, a very good, good question. But I just wanted to, to, um, answer that. Thank you, Mrs. Cunningham.
Okay, the next one, um, related to the, um, issue with transportation, um, and, you know, quarantining issues and not having busing available, which kept the kids at home. So the question was if there's an issue like that again with transportation, would it be possible to, um, allow kids to go to school if parents are able to drive the kids to school? To avoid, um, you know, the busing situation that we have.
So another, another excellent question. I'm hoping that this will never happen again, that we don't have Transportation Department. But we have, we have the issue of equity, so we need, not all students can be driven to school. So the school has to look at it in an equitable way, so that's why that decision was made. Thank you, Mrs. Cunningham.
Okay, and the last one, um, was about the decision to cancel the fall athletic seasons. Just to, you know, asking for an explanation of that decision and questioning why, uh, parents and players' perspectives were not taken into account.
Okay, so this, this question is very near and dear to my heart because I was a high school athlete, so I understand where this is coming from and the, the emotion and concern, especially for our seniors. What I can share is that we did have a COVID-related outbreak. Um, I wish I could say specifics, but as you know, I cannot because of all the confidentiality and HIPAA laws. But it's the district's duty to adhere to the rigorous health and safety guidelines imposed by the state and local health officials when confronting increases in COVID nineteen positive test results with the school community. And it's also the district's obligation to ensure the health and safety of all of the student athletes and that they're protected at all times. So I would love to be able to give more specifics, I'm, I'm not able to because of confidant, confidentiality. But, um, please know that none of these decisions are made with, um, without the medical director and without the Department of Health. It, it's, it's painful for, for me to, to have to make these decisions and I understand, but, um, I wish I could share more, but I can't. Thank you, Mrs. Cunningham.
Those were all the emails that we received since the last month.
Okay, um, so we can now move on to board remarks, committee updates. Anyone have anything they want to share?
A couple of, uh, community updates from the, uh, the meetings. Brewster and, um, and, um, Southeast, they're still having their meetings through Zoom. I've been attending them to promote the information from the board. Any updates that are public knowledge, I'm bringing to their attention. They actually have meetings, uh, this week. So I'm going to bring up the general updates that we've been talking about. Do you think it would be prudent to mention the, um, financial plan meetings that we have on Zoom? If those dates are solid, you know, they have as small as audiences we do, but I can at least let, you know, these different audiences know about the potential for these meetings. Normally we would have little meetings at the different town halls, but it's probably not practical in these times, so if, if everybody thinks it's all right, I would mention. Will you agree?
Yeah.
Okay, um, and related to that last Wednesday, there was the, um, a small veterans a day ceremony down in Electrozone Field, they did it socially distanced. Mask wearing, um, some of the veterans were there. Um, it was a nice small, but it just shows that Brewster's still going ahead, they still did their little meetings. I wanted to let everybody know. Uh, on the eighteenth of this week, the PTA is having their annual meeting at seven thirty. It's Zoom, of course, they have been pushing out information. And I know the district has been promoting that information as well, just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention. And as I'm sure Daisy will let us know, uh, CAPS in the middle of their food drive and they're asking for gift cards, food donations and such. You know, maybe we can get a little update from her, but, and Rotary is doing a co-drive. Uh, lots of different groups, the New York Riders are also doing food, there's lots of different groups all with the constraints we're in trying to get out, do the right thing in a socially responsible way. So I just wanted to bring all those things also to everyone's attention. And because we won't see you before Thanksgiving, I wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So just to kind of touch base with, um, Scott was mentioning within Putnam CAP. So Putnam CAP, Putnam Community Action Partnership, it is a not-for-profit organization and we assist low-income families in Putnam County or Putnam County, um, areas and those families are low-income based, so I am the services coordinator there. Uh, so we will be having our program next week for the Thanksgiving and the toy program. So that is something, if you have any families, they can definitely get in contact with us and I'll just give us, give the office number there, which is the eight four five two seven eight eighty twenty-one.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll just quickly say, uh, on November fifth, uh, I, I was, I attended the key communicators meet, communicators meeting and Dr. Banlow and Scott introduced me to, uh, the community leaders on that, uh, committee. It was basically an introductory, uh, uh, session. I got a chance to meet everybody and I look forward to the next meeting, uh, which is actually not until February fourth. But that's about it for that. Thank you, Scott, for that. Thank you, Dr. Banlow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sonia, from the, uh, Brewster Education Foundation, we're in the midst of our Jeep raffle. Uh, in the past, we've always raffled off a Corvette. This year we're raffling off a Jeep. We're very encouraged by the community participation and how involved people are, so they can go to B E F dot org. Uh, the tickets are seventy-five dollars apiece or three for two hundred. Uh, in addition, we're going to have the vehicle itself out at select locations on the weekends. Uh, so if you see the, the, um, Jeep parked there, you can come over, buy your tickets directly, you don't pay the little service fee that comes with the, um, with the, uh, the online purchasing and obviously with the the online purchasing. And obviously, as always, all the funds that are raised are going to go towards supporting the students and the graduating class from the school. So it's a wonderful cause, and we really appreciate the the community's help and support in getting the word out and getting those tickets sold. So the drawing is December twenty sixth. So nice little, nice little late Christmas present for somebody.
Thank you.
Just fairly quickly, I just wanted to also go back regarding the PTA meeting for tomorrow. We do have a special guest speaker, Hilga Klucit, who is the school counselor, and the discussion topic for that day will be children and the pandemic. So that is something, that is a topic that will be discussed tomorrow.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so next upcoming meetings. So we discussed November twenty fourth as a work session. And the next board meet, business meeting is December fifteenth. Dr. Banlow, are there any other dates in addition to Thanksgiving, of course? With that time off, is there anything else?
Not not that I can think of right now. No, I think I think that's it.
Okay. So of course, as always, you, the public and community is welcome to email the board and the superintendent at BOE at BrewsterSchools.org. And we do need to go to executive session. We have counsel with for discussion, negotiations with bargaining units, and then we do still have our quarterly review for the board and the superintendent. So we still have a little bit of work ahead of us. But I need a motion for that, please.
Carrie, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Carrie. And a second?
This is Eric. I'll second.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, all those in favor or opposed? Carrie?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Francine?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
And myself, Sonia, yes, none opposed. So we are adjourned to executive session. I just like to say we will not be returning to take any action. So that's it for the evening. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.